A common meeting, this is the regular session of the American Council of the City of Visby, County of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, December 15th, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G in Visby, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, please call roll.
House Member Gabe Lindstrom.
Here.
Council Member Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Council Member Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Council Member Leslie John.
Here.
Council Member Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City Staff Robert Smith, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk Carrie Bagley, Finance Director Daniel Duchan, Personnel Director Dwayne Wallace, Operations Manager Britt Hanson, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, council members, and welcome everybody in the audience. Certainly appreciate your attendance. For a moment of silence, seeing that a week from today is Christmas, I'd just like us to take a moment to reflect upon how incredibly lucky we are and all the blessings that have been given to us in the last year and hopes for the future of Visby. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best hope with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Under announcements, I'd like to mention, Mr. City Manager, do we know where our fire personnel are? I have not gotten an update, Mayor. I assume they're in transit with the truck from California. Right. Thank you. The, uh, today was the day that we had to, our personnel go to Fontana, California, and pick up a used water tender. So the Visby Fire Department will finally have the capabilities of having a water tender. And it had a top speed of 60 and they left at 8:30 this morning. I assume that they probably stopped for something they eat, so I'm not totally surprised that they're not here. But, uh, well, after it gets down here and gets polished up, we're gonna have an official presentation and want to thank the Rotary Club of Visby and the Rotary Club of Fontana for getting together and making this a done deal. Thank you. And I do have a proclamation. Reefs Across America. Whereas the Reefs Across America Organization was formed in 2007 as an extension of the Arlington Reef Project of 1992, where reefs were laid on the graves of fallen soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas the mission of the Reefs Across America Organization is to remember the fallen, to honor those that serve and their families, and teach the next generation about the value of freedom. And whereas each year, Reefs Across America chooses a new theme to help supporters focus their messaging and outreach in their own communities, and has chosen the theme for 2018 is "Be Their Witness." And whereas each year, the mission is carried out by the coordination of reef lane ceremonies on a specified Saturday in December at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as at veteran cemeteries and other locations in all 50 states and beyond. And whereas Saturday, December 15th, 2018, has been designated by the Reefs Across America Organization as the date for those ceremonies to occur, then therefore, being resolved that I, David M. Smith, Mayor of the City of Visby, Arizona, do hereby encourage all citizens to participate with Reefs Across America and be their witness. And these ceremonies surround a great nation. In witness thereof, I had thereon to set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Visby to be affixed this 15th day of December, 2018, David M. Smith, Mayor. And we had the ceremonies at both cemeteries this last Saturday, and it was absolutely fantastic. And I want to really thank the city cemetery committee that stepped up and got this done. They did a fantastic job, as well as the VFW and the American Legion and all the sponsors that helped put money together for the reefs to come in. The last pining, there was, at that point, 330 reefs that had been ordered to come in, and they were placed on the graves. It was quite a moving ceremony. So if I could, is Grace Wiggins here? And Smoothie, why don't you come on up there? There I am. See the door? Here's the proclamation, you know.
Oh, yeah.
All right. And I want to thank you both so very much.
My pleasure.
Grace, you did a, you, you all did an incredible job. For you to be able to put this together in a matter of a couple of months is unbelievable. So for the City of Visby, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And of course, I was looking in the back row, and Luchi Jacomino was sitting right in front of me, and I didn't follow up, so to that, I apologize, Ms. Jacomino. Ms. Jacomino was an integral part of that statement. So we're going to leave now to call the public. We have questions. We'll start off with Ms. Susan Blackford, House of Public. Do you need assistance, Ms. Blackford?
Yes, I'm doing real good after shooting pictures. I'm close, but I'm doing okay. Uh, ready, Ms. Susan Blackford, morning. Uh, in my opinion, why do we have a city manager or any council when we seem to outsource everything to a different vendor? Uh, tech support to Utah, John did an excellent job and lives here, sewer treatment plan running and falls under public works director, animal shelter, why? Uh, even rumor, rumor that it is, they are talking about outsourcing our tourist and visitor center, and why? Do we really need a human resource director that falls under city manager duty? And look what they are trying to do, in my opinion, to the fire department and ambulance. We have the best in the state. In my six years, the council, I have done nothing to do before on items to destroy this wonderful town. Start asking folks, why?
Thank you, Ms. Blackford. Welcome.
Um, Kelly Almera, San Jose City. I've been a Visby resident and Visby owner since 1997. She's not here tonight, but I wanted to thank Jennifer Loria for her tenure as tourism and marketing manager. She is a tremendously talented, hardworking person. She approaches everything and everyone with a smile, boundless energy and a positive attitude. She has been a marvelous asset to Visby's tourism and responsible for many of the accolades that Visby has received in the past few years. I also want to thank Rachel Hudson for her work, most recently with the Local First Foundation for the current holiday passport promotion. It's been very well received by visitors and locals alike. Both of these women are to be commended for their time and efforts. They have worked tirelessly to promote Visby as the unique and diverse community that we love and call home. That being said, I'm deeply concerned that there has been as yet no effort to fulfill the tourism and marketing management position, and I give the city the license, the benefits that Jen brought, and thanks to hire somebody to continue the great work that Jen began.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and new council members. Welcome, and happy holidays to everybody. Boxing Day, Kwanzaa, solstice, all that good stuff. So first, Wayne, stand up.
No.
Yes. Take a bow.
No.
All right, everybody clap, because he has another certification. You have never met anybody employed in a city or state office that works as hard to keep himself up, to keep himself current, to move himself forward in his position. It is truly amazing to watch him over the years, as he just keeps checking off the boxes and getting better and better and more and more knowledgeable. We are incredibly, incredibly blessed to have him with us. And I can't be any more eloquent than the last speaker about Jen, but I would encourage you, very, very strenuous, to look at the amount that was spent on tourism and by the city, the budget part is there, and what she brought in. In other words, did she take that money and turn it around fivefold, which is better than most of us could do, or better than most of us could do in something like Vegas? So I would encourage you, if that was the case, not only to hire somebody post haste that is just as good as a fire, but to give them the money to work with. Because if she took her budget and turned it around, let's take more, and turned it around and made it bigger, because that appears to be the only growth thing that we've got going on here in the town, or at least the foreseeable future. So I urge you to get whatever you need together, to get the posting out, and get somebody into that position as soon as possible. The one of the poster to that is, most of the things that happen in that kind of a realm have time-sensitive things on them. There are publication dates, there are submission dates, there are grant submission dates, and if we fall off the timing, being on top of getting everything submitted like that, it's gonna be a lot of extra work and a lot of difficulty getting back on top of it. So I look forward to hearing about our getting a new person on board and getting them some more budget in April so that we can continue to welcome people in ever greater numbers toward the work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the new council members, to the first full council meeting, as official people. Um, my name is Fred Miller. I live at 39 Hazard, and along with my wife Anita, own Copper City Inn. And we publicly want to thank city employee Jen Luria, Ms. Jen Luria, the recently resigned visitor center supervisor for outstanding contributions to our city. She's been responsible for bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars to our community, and that has resulted in thousands of dollars of tax revenue that pay for the critical services that all of us use. She's made our city a better place to live, and we, the two of us, particularly are grateful for her competence. I'd like to give you a short history of bad decisions about tourism and a brief synopsis of the economic value of tourism. We don't have too long, but seven years ago, the city manager and council, over vehement business opposition, slashed the advertising budget to $25,000 for three years in a row, the tourism advertising budget. The city manager unilaterally moved the visitor center from high visibility and traffic at the convention center to the mine tour building, substantially decreasing visibility and traffic. Predictably, visitation and revenue dropped. It's only in the last few years that we've recovered from these really disastrous decisions. About 53% to 58% of Visby's $7 million budget is dependent on tourism, and that's direct spending by the tourism and indirect spending by business owners, employees, and others. Tourism effects ripple through our city. Visitation has spurred housing sales, and it's offered opportunity for expansion of new and existing businesses. Tourism is very important to Visby. I urge the city manager to post the tourism position soon, and I hope that there will be no budget reductions, a reorganization of the department. It is critical that continuity be maintained. And diversified economic development is very difficult for Visby, and I hope others speak to that. But briefly, my four years spent on the Visby, excuse me, the I Visby Economic Development Committee has convinced me that tourism development is the future of Visby. It's the only thing that pays the bills. On the I Visby Committee, we tried many, many, many ways to attract different kinds of businesses and nonprofits and stuff to the city, all to no avail. And if it is the future, it's our task, your task, our task, to ensure continuity and as well as to augment and build on and promote the kind of tourism that's beneficial to the entire community, not just old Visby. And as a poster, I, as well as several others, have been advocating thoughtful tourism expansion for at least a decade and a half. It campaigns me, as well as its demo trial.
Mr. Knight.
Oops, done? Oh, my poster. Oh, God, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Doris Turner. I'm a property manager in Visby, and I've been harassing city council over the years about sewer and garbage. I understand that a sewer and garbage discussion next month, and I would like something be done about residential. Case employee. I have a small duplex, 106, 108 Otermont. The whole building is 1,100 square feet, one apartment, 550 square feet, one person living in each apartment if both are occupied. Sewer and garbage is $152.40. That is totally ridiculous. So something, and one of the council people were there, sent me the ordinance, and, yeah, I can read the ordinance, but we need to do something with the ordinance. I mean, a duplex, triplex, maybe even a fourplex deserves lower rates than maybe a hotel or something else, or a bar or a restaurant. And please, I would ask that you put that ordinance right up. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Like Fred, I've been serving on the I Visby Committee for four years. Publicly, the most important thing we've done is we work with the Urban Land Institute. It's a series of very high-level professionals, and we asked them to help us plan economic strategies for Visby. They gave us a couple of long-term strategies, one of which was resolving housing inadequacies. We don't have needs for seniors, we don't have medium, we don't have modern housing for border patrol, and we've got a lot of houses that need repairs. The other thing they emphasize long-term is that we need to approach essential services like schools. Low-performing schools are a barrier to economic development. Short-term, what came up was tourism. They suggested that we rebrand Visby, which we did with our Re-Visby campaign. They suggested that we support and encourage small businesses, especially craft, the craft makers movement, which are businesses like distilleries, coffee bean grinders, fashion designers, tourism. So tourism is really what we have to work with, whether you like it or not. That's what brings in 50% of the money. So Jen had a knowledge of Visby. She lived here for quite a while. She lived in Phoenix, so she had a knowledge of Arizona. She was able to engage young travel writers and get them excited about our community. She was a graphic artist. She could, she did enhanced web and print design that we've never had before. Her salary was half that of our human resources manager and half that of our operations director. So it's not unrealistic that she left. I would like to ask the mayor and council that they list the job immediately and make filling it a priority, that they assess the salary with respect to the skills required and the other very high city salaries, and that they form an ad hoc committee of tourism-related businesses to help select the candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Allen.
I'm Chuck File, business owner with Mary's Faree of Pantera Gallery in Old Visby. Thank you, mayor, council, city manager, for your service to this community. I know you guys work hard to try to bring it all together. But what I want to talk about again is thanking Jen Luria for probably enhancing our business by 30% this year from those articles and her efforts. But we have doubts. As a business owner, we're doubtful if we don't continue support of tourism in this town, that we can stay in business, will move on. Not that we want to, but our choices. We don't have business, and most of Visby is dependent on tax base, and us little business guys, the ones that make it happen. So I would implore you to take a hard look at this position and to try and fulfill it with somebody of Jen Luria's abilities, expertise in social media, and get with the modern world. And if you don't, you're gonna lose a lot of us, and I hate to say that, I think there are other people here that would say, well, Visby's not a friendly town for tourists or small business. So I implore you to really take that to heart and make a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, citizens of Visby. I'm here also to speak about the tourism decision. So thank Jen Luria for doing a great job and showing a good direction for that position. I feel very strongly that she represented the demographic and could speak to the demographic that's of very high value, demographic for Visby, people who are in those, you know, mid-20s through 40s age, that will come down here for the weekend and spend $200, $300 rather than coming through on a bus and, you know, maybe having a lunch or maybe having, you know, doing the mine tour and spending 20 bucks or something like that. So that's, I think the target and the direction, vision that she brought was very important. And I think it's important to, you know, to the lodging industry, restaurant bar industry, or that kind of thing. And that cohesive vision, I think, is essential to perpetuate, to keep going, to have somebody in that position that is going to, you know, gonna stay and it's not going to be high turnover because it's a low-salary job. I think that that's a very important thing to do, is have somebody who can execute a long-term plan for, you know, bringing in more tourism and growing the population in our tax base. I think those are really key things. And getting somebody in there quickly and maintaining the institutional knowledge that is built up from what the work that Jen and others have done, and, you know, keeping the ball rolling for the good things that are being done and have been thought about. So getting somebody in there quickly, getting them up to speed quickly, I think is essential. That's Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Black. General business, item number one, Alex Perry.
I'm looking at the county's 200,000, 270,000, 30,000.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Do we have a discussion, council?
We have a couple of questions. Sure. Still seeing the office depot for little things that should be done here. I still reckon that's still happening. Had a question about the lolly motors. I thought we were doing all this stuff in town here in-house.
Which county are you speaking in, sir?
This is Vehicle Parts and Labor.
Is it under?
Page five.
Could you?
Vehicle parts and labor, page five.
Got it. I'm here, Lucy, about you, sir. Ms. Bagley, since we don't have anybody prepared for here, are you aware of the situation? What was the amount, sir?
There was three of them, and it's still over, it's like $1,200.
It looks like it's parts for the rescue trucks and.
Some stuff that can't be done, like.
I'm sure they must be, we don't send the ambulances to the county. It's the county vehicles. The vehicles are just from the county, the county repairs.
Thank you. Anything more? Is there anything else, sir? Okay, Ms. Jack, may I?
I have a question. On page three, under personnel, the sure manual membership, not that I would pay membership fee, but does that pay for all administrators, or is there all, so you get membership fees? This is in particular for the human resource. So do you pay for, you know, the, all?
Certain positions for other employees.
That's just one thing. One of the things that they've concerned me, and this falls under multiple, multiple departments, specifically sewer, parks, building, maintenance, is that as you look through it, there's all these little purchases of screwdriver, a drill. I'm just curious, do we not have some kind of inventory? I mean, you can't drive to the garage and take that out. It just seems like we read this, and I know from past working with the city, oh, that's right, Ace Hardware, let's run. And there's a lot of purchases, and we're not, I mean, we're talking over $2,000. Is there?
I mean, finances mentioned before that we felt that there was a need for some kind of inventory or toolboxes or things that people need to keep track and assign to them, but that hasn't been implemented.
Because, yeah, I mean, each time, it's like nickel and dime, you play that up, and that's a waste. And I'm just curious if we even know where that's put in after it's purchased.
Right. The invoices come through finance, and we do see a lot of the same things for industrial hardware. We have mentioned this before, and it would be up to the departments to implement some kind of inventory control.
Do you have some slides?
On page five, there is the second to last one, for CT, janitorial, and maintenance, cleaning offices, and restrooms. We have a cleaning company that does that, I thought we used in-house.
That was for the, you know, the material attention, starting to get that clean out that's been abandoned for several years, so it's extremely filthy over there. So they went over there and they washed it, the walls, the doors, the windows, they cleaned the inside and all over there.
Okay, I thought Mr. Smith said that would be done in-house, but that was just kind of a model. And then on page six, we have drinking water. And then on page six, we had drinking water for the garage and it's over six hundred dollars. Several years ago, we did put in the filters and to help with the.
For at least, for a month, I've been using Kool-Aid for, so for five and a half years, you can use Kool-Aid over there. I don't know what filters are, I have not seen any filters over at the garage anymore. And that water goes out to everybody at public, well, public works, whoever else needs it. We can use it as far as I can remember.
Okay, and then the last one I had was on page eight. At the first batch on the top, there's a thing there for nanny content watch? It's not a whole lot, but it's just.
It's a library or a computer.
Depending on the computers and the children's special number five.
That license comes up here.
That's important. My sense, Wayne is up there, can I ask him?
Staff, did you solicit us to?
Well, yeah, it did after, without the tools, is there any plan? Is that legal to ask if there's any plan? Since it seems to be asked, you just said it's asked continually, is that legal?
Mr. Hanson?
I'm sorry, asking?
If they have any plan to count off, you know, their tools so that this doesn't continue. Can I ask that question?
Yeah, it's on a, it's on a, sure.
Actually, actually, Karen and I talked about that. You know, it's definitely an idea to do that, I just don't know when. I can't, it's not something I can get done right away. There's a lot of things we want to change in public works, we get to kind of bite it a little bit at a time. I have some ideas for some inventory stuff, but just haven't the time to do it.
So is it right to say there's a plan, that we don't have a due date? Mr. Smith?
Mayor, if I could, two really quick items. One of the things we discussed in finances, purchase cards, if we obtain banking services that will allow us to deploy this, we can track individual purchases by employee over time and if we see somebody buying twenty, somebody buying twenty screwdrivers, then we know who we need to go talk to about who's buying. Currently, we don't have a tool库 or an inventory or control systems for small tools, and we do need that, we know we need that control. I'd also touch on prep for the juvenile detention facility. We are using staff labor at the juvenile detention facility. Dwayne's already started a small demo over there. We did not feel it was safe, though, for staff employees who may not have the appropriate personal protective gear to actually go in and clean because of what we found there in the environment. So we felt it was safer to have a contractor who's trained to stay safe doing that for that part of the work. But you will see staff time and staff effort and volunteer work happening over that building.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Well, we have a motion, we have a second. Goes in favor of paying accounts payable, signified by statement I.
Aye.
Upon the same side, motion passes unanimously. Item number two, approval of the consent agenda, item A through F. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on December fourth, two thousand eighteen at seven P M. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on November twentieth, two thousand eighteen at seven P M. C, approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on November twentieth, two thousand eighteen at five thirty P M. D, approval of the resignation of Kathy Murphy from the Bisbee Arts Commission. E, approval of the appointment of Douglas Dunn to the planning and assembly commission. F, approval of the liquor license application for chuckleheads located in forty-one Brewery Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona, Matthew Becker applicant. Council, does any member of the council wish one of these for further discussion? Here we now entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item A through F.
Thank you, do we have a second? All seconded. Ms. Cornano?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number three, old business, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O at eighteen fourteen to conditionally rezone A P N one oh three dash sixty-one dash three forty-eight owned by Davis and Donna Gatten from R one to C M one. Council, this is the second reading. Is there any member that wishes any discussion?
I move to approve a ordinance zero dash eighteen dash fourteen to conditionally rezone A P N one oh three dash sixty-one dash three forty-eight owned by Davis and Donna Gatten from R one to C M one.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornano?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Old business, I agree. Discussion of possible approval of an I G A for legal services with Cochise County Attorney's Office. Mr. Hanson, sit.
I'm hustling.
Ms. Blackford, I know that you are signed up on this and I'll give you your opportunity, just a few minutes.
No problem, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. We've now been representing the city for three and a half years, leaving the civil division of the county attorney's office. We found the work very interesting, it's made us better lawyers at the county, and we hope we brought some of our expertise we learned at the county to the city as well. We've worked with some very good people and that's very interesting work. But it's also been a very tumultuous time. A few days ago, at Put Together List, we've been, we are now on our, since in that three and a half years, we are now on our third city manager, our third fire chief, third public works director, third human resources director, and the third grants administrator. It sounds like we're about to be a paid director, tourism director, second finance director, and a second library director. And that's just at the department at level. So it's been kind of a wild ride. And I mention that because a small fraction of our work is what the mayor and council sees, because we do, a small fraction for the mayor and the council. About ninety-five percent of our work is done with staff. A little bit about our office, civil division, we have four attorneys, each with different specialties. We also have three paralegals and one legal secretary and office manager. The paralegals and the legal secretary don't do a whole lot of work for the city, and one of our attorneys, Sarah Ransom, is primarily engaged in water law, so she does not do much work for the city. The folks at work do most of the work are here tonight, the three usually here tonight, me, Ella Orunio, and Christine Roberts. You have seen the evaluations we've sent out to anonymous, or I've had, Ashley sent out anonymous evaluations at three different points during three and a half years, and they've been, for you here tonight, and I'm glad to say they have been uniformly, uniformly positive. A little bit about the structure of the I G A as it began, when I sat down with then city manager Justin Johnson, negotiated, we both agreed that it would be in the city's best interest and our office's best interest to take the fixed fee agreement rather than a per hour agreement. Justin's reasons for that was primarily he wanted to have a budget he knew was going to come in, at the amount set. The previous contract was an hourly contract and had gone quite a bit over budget. And also, as we learned on taking on the city duties, a lot of people, because they've been, the budget for legal fees had gone over budget and had been, a lot of department heads been told to watch out, don't try and use too much in the way of legal expense, were afraid to make that phone call because they could hear the change. So for those reasons, Justin, on behalf of the city, wanted to have a fixed fee agreement. I did as well because of what our use of that money is to pay, to pay for the paralegal with that money and to do that, I needed to have the set amount so I could pay the salary and the benefits that go along with it. And also, frankly, as attorneys, our experience has been, it's a whole lot better to have staff and council reach out to their attorneys and not be afraid to do that because of the cost that would be incurred in an hourly contract. And we found that that is a very good preventative measure rather than coming in afterwards and messing it because things didn't get done ahead of time. So we're happy with the structure of the contract and I hope the city is happy with the structure of the contract as well. The original contract that we signed in two thousand fifteen was a fixed fee contract for sixty thousand dollars. When we had it renewed two years ago, we did not ask for an increase in that amount. We did not ask for an increase in that amount because city employees had not received a raise at that point, and we didn't feel it would be fair for us to ask for more money for a raise for our paralegal when the city employees weren't getting raises. The city employees thankfully were able to get a raise this past year of five percent, so we're asking for a raise of five percent as well. Some of that will be going towards a pay increase, some of it will be going offset higher health benefit costs. I did some checking about what other cities in Cochise County are paying for legal services. Wilcox, the number came in right about eighty thousand dollars. Douglas came in at around ninety-five thousand dollars. The city of Benson came in at an astounding three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. But I suspect a lot of that has to do with Villages of Vicnetto, because of very, very legally intensive track. And actually, they've been doing that for the last few years, they've been paying a whole lot. It looked like they paid eighty thousand for outside counsel, and I think that was related to Villages of Vicnetto. How much of the regular legal fees are directed towards Villages of Vicnetto and the legal issues that entails, I'm not sure. So it may not be an apples to apples comparison, but it was a pretty astounding number when I looked at it. In twenty, from what you consider, I could only find a number from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and that was fifty-three thousand dollars. Tombstone, I couldn't find a figure for all. Sierra Vista was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. About a fair amount of that is for, I'm guessing for their outside water lawyer as well. But anyway, I think the amount that we negotiated back in two thousand fifteen was a fair amount. I think the amount we're requesting this year is a fair amount as well. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have some statements, but not questions. Okay. Any direct questions of Mr. Hanson?
So the sixty-three, it's not in addition to, we have other fees also, right, in addition to the sixty-three?
No, that's.
So like, so when we're at the lawyers, like, for the recent events also, correct?
Oh, for the, for the B O A.
Yeah, so that's kind of included in all of it, right?
Is that?
So sixty-three plus other lawyer fees, so there's other cities that are including all their lawyer fees in the one.
Okay.
Yeah. That's it, so I just wanted, so it's sixty-three plus, I don't know, do we know what the total's going to be?
No, of course not.
We don't know what the total's going to be?
No.
Ms. Jack?
I don't, yeah, we don't know what the total is, but I actually have several things because I've heard from a lot of my constituents about this I G A this week. And I, one, and this was the first one, was what we've spent on outside counsel since the I G A was implemented. So Carrie in finance was nice enough to pull those numbers for me and add since two thousand fifteen, it's six thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-one cents, which is not exorbitant, but we do have the lawsuit coming up that's going on a longer till and we're going to have to hire outside counsel to try it out, we already have, and that's actually the biggest bill we have so far, two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And I just wondered, are there other lawsuits in the pipeline? Because I've heard rumors of them, but.
No, the only one that I'm aware of is the Board of Adjustment Appeal.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then, let's see, the other thing that people brought up to me that we're, and I'm mostly saying this, these may not actually be directly direct questions, but I want this out in the public because this is what people are asking about. Are advising to go into executive sessions. And I've heard that for the last couple of years, and councils got into executive session thirteen times over the last two years, and obviously no time, it fell right under the statute for executives, very clear why they went into, they were advising on personnel matters or things that, you know, discussing public. There was one that was questionable, it was on January second of two thousand eighteen, when you were discussing a change in the zoning code, and I don't know if, I don't expect you to even remember this.
No, I don't remember it.
Okay, yeah, so, and I was going to just ask if you could clarify that a little bit, but if you don't remember it, we don't have to bring it up. But just so that the public is aware that going into executive session, there's only one that wasn't really obvious to me what happened.
Do you have the agenda item, the wording of the agenda item in front of you that might?
I can pull it up.
If it's in my memory. And actually, if you remember what it is?
I don't, but I'm looking myself.
Okay, it says, public hearing and discussion of possible approval of notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash one seven dash one eight, amending the zoning code article three point six point one to insert a reference to the current international building code instead of the uniform building code.
Oh, I have a hard time believing, we went into executive session on that, that's, I can't think of any remotely possible reason for going into executive session on that tonight.
Okay.
Don't remember actually doing it either.
Okay, well, if you didn't, then I read them out wrong.
Okay.
So, and then the other thing that people have concerns about are that with this I G A, the county is all its own first priority. But if there's a conflict between the city and the county, you can't correct this.
Yeah, and we have not had that happen. For the most part, when, there's been quite a few I T As, especially in the, in the last year, year and a half between the city and the county. And the way, like for procurement services, planning services, some fleet services, I'm not going to remember them all, but the way it almost always happens is, you know, the city manager or whoever is a part of the city gets together with somebody that they're the counterpart at the county, the fleet services director, the procurement director, and they come up with their agreement, and then they tell us what the substantive terms are in the contract and we fill out the rest. So we're never in a position, and we have never been in a position where we have been negotiating on behalf of the county against the city or on behalf of the city against the county. We try and stay out of policy decisions and the terms of an agreement, like for procurement or fleet services, but that would be policy stuff, so we plug it in. And we've been, I think, I think it's worked out really well, rather than getting things over lawyered and having two lawyers trying to waste time over, you know, the like terms of the contract, we've done pretty efficiently for both parties. We've done pretty efficiently for both parties.
Okay, and then this is one other thing that I thought of while you were talking is the issue of when you have to conflict out of a case, as you recently did for the Long Island issue, people were questioning if it is really necessary that the whole county attorney's office does. And can you clarify that that happens in the criminal division as well, that that is a typical practice for the county attorney's office? Not just, because I was fairly misleading when you said that is common in law firms, it sounded like you were talking about private firms only, but that's typical for the whole county attorney's office.
Well, the criminal division does conflict out from time to time. Since I'm not in the criminal division, I'm not aware of all of, you know, their conflicts. I've been aware of a few where they've had to sit it outside of the county. I'm trying to think of example, when something had to get settled by the criminal division. I know I've heard of it, but it just doesn't register because it's not part of my world.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for answering my question.
But they have the same, they, they're subject to the same conflict of interest laws and rules and regulations that we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Jeff, may I?
Can you give the statement that you increased the contract because of the increase in pay for city employees and such, but as a contract person, you don't follow the same regulations as a regular employee? And I don't, I didn't see it, so I mean, I missed it. Whereas your paraprofessional that you hired, it has nothing to do with the city, so why wouldn't that even be considered? If you're hiring somebody with your money that you get paid, that means you can do what you want. That should be a reflection of the contract. And if you're trying to justify a raise, so I have some employee, then that's completely separate from the city, isn't that?
Well, and yes, paralegal does not do much work for the city. She's our public records coordinator. But I thought, I think as a matter of fairness, time passes, if city employees don't get raises, our, my employee shouldn't, but that's the revenue stream I have to pay that employee. And therefore, I think it's fair to ask for that increase.
The, the point of clarification was that her contract with the county actually is only paying for, for the paraprofessional. And we're getting three, we're actually getting four attorneys.
Right.
For that price.
Right.
So it's my understanding that he's indicating that his paraprofessional's raise would be absorbed by raising that fee, which then still provides us the use of the four attorneys.
Actually, what he said was that the city employees got raises, so therefore it should justify that he is paraprofessional, but his paraprofessional has nothing to do with the contract, is my point. And my point is, when you contract later, you contract and you work for that prize, for that contract, not all of that standing within with it. When you were talking about the prices of other cities, did you take into consideration the size of towns and business owners and what business?
Yeah, I, I did. There's no exact comparison to the city. You know, if you go on population, we're larger than Wilcox by a couple of thousand. Death was about the closest one, at the 80,000 for Wilcox. You know, Benson should have been comparable, but I think because they had a lot of legal services with the villages of Igneto, it's really hard to, hard to compare. I would have liked to have gotten a number for Tombstone. And Wachukah City is, you know, at 1,500, I think, something like that, they're paying $53,000. For a comparable, but yeah, there's, there's never going to get a perfectly apples to apples comparison.
And you have seven months left on this contract, correct?
Correct. Well, six. Six and a half.
So I guess my question, like in most contracts, you generally wait till three, sometimes less than three months. I'm just curious why all of a sudden now?
Yeah.
How you know, when I get my contract, I'm a contract, technically a contract lever, and I don't get my contract until I...
The reason I'm here in December is because I've got an employee who's dependent on this revenue stream. Deborah's been with us for about a year, she has a six little child, and she really needs to have her job and she needs to know whether she's got a job and needs to plan because she can't do without the income. And plus she really likes what she does, she's a public records coordinator. So she's very dependent on that. So that's why we're here, so we can, she can plan ahead.
Anything else, Mr. Jeff, may I? I just, I don't have any questions, I mean...
I have one more question in for Mr. Smith. What options do we have if, you know, during the six months, what other options do we have if we don't go here?
Mayor, council, if you choose not to work with the county through an IGA, you certainly can put out a request for qualifications, that's what you use for an attorney. I don't do a request for proposals. A request for qualifications would evaluate other attorneys based on their qualifications and fit without a discussion about price. Once you've selected an attorney through that process, then you negotiate the price. And I think at that point, once you've identified someone and you begin the negotiation of price, that would be when you would find out what your legal services would cost you. I can tell you that my experience here in Arizona has been that legal services run 120 to 160,000 when you're with a municipal firm here in Arizona and you're in a city of 10,000 to 12,000 people.
My, one more question. When we had prior legal services we worked with, firm, we were with individual attorneys, do you have any knowledge of that?
I do. When we were, we were working in Chino Valley with a private attorney who was not a municipal attorney. And after 12 million dollar lawsuit and significant failures, the city decided to go with a municipal firm. And the, the charge rates with Musgrove Drutes, CAC and FLAC were similar in the 140 to 160,000 range.
I was insinuating, sorry, I don't think we'd use one of Chino Valley, right?
Yeah, I couldn't speak to legal costs here or the skill sets of attorneys that are here in the MIBI area.
So you don't know what we were paying prior?
Seven years ago, we were paying 127,000. Six years ago, everybody was 120,000. And we may remember that back in that time period, there was a suit against the city where we still had to go out. And I think it caused the city another $80,000 for a private attorney to represent us because the attorney that we had at that time wasn't able to.
So my most question, why that two-year plan on, why not do a year?
For the same reason that we're here in December, I've got an employee dependent on this revenue stream and want to give her security. For some security, two years is not a lot of security, but it's some security.
Mr. Smith?
Mayor, if I could, speaking to the term of the contract, it takes a significant amount of time for legal firms to get to know a community and to get to know the history of a community and to be able to effectively answer questions quickly on the fly. And multi-year contracts are very, very common when you're talking about legal services that are going to span a very large range of issues in law.
Thank you. I don't think there's anything else, Mr. Hanson. I want to, Ms. Black, for an opportunity to use your three minutes, please.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to be so nervous and stuttered this time. It's been a while since I've been here. You probably mutter really good.
I didn't hear what you said to mutter anything.
Okay, I did, I will probably try not to stutter so much. And I haven't been here in a while and I probably saw a lot of this stuff too. Okay, yes, all right. Good evening. I am again wondering really why this contract for the county legal services is coming up now, when I believe it's not due until next year. I wish to tell the council my personal knowledge with attorney Lori Owen and her representation of the city to retain our certificate of necessity to keep our ambulance service in first position. That's making more money for the city. Arizona ambulance challenged our license in the spring of 2016. Reading in the observer that we lost our case and not understanding why, I called the Arizona Department of Health and was told that all the transcripts were online and I got them and read them. What I saw was a total unprepared of Ms. Owen. She had no information, like even how much did the ambulance service contribute to the city and how unprepared the fire chief was. A good lawyer was prepared, the fire chief and herself. There was a list of items based on questions asked of Ms. Owen and no documentation provided at the hearing. Since Ms. Owen seemed not to provide the information, I was able to gather and send a letter to the Department of Health on June 22, 16. I received a letter back on June 28, 2016, that we had an opportunity to appeal before July 5th final ruling. And then again, another 30 days after that. I called the Office of Health and spoke to them and I was told they appreciated my efforts on giving them all their information, but they needed to have it come from the attorney. Nothing came from Ms. Owen and on July 5th, 2016, the judge gave a final ruling that the Arizona, that the license goes to Arizona ambulance. Another thing in their favor was they had newer ambulances. Since 2012, the council has always voted down the table for the purchase of new ambulances. In my opinion, the city needs only a part-time legal services. Maybe we can find retired lawyer out here. Thank you.
Thank you. For, for the record, Ms. Owens hasn't been employed by the county attorney's office in way over a year.
Can I answer to that?
Is there an answer to that?
Well, I just want to say it just shows the caliber of attorneys they have.
Thank you, ma'am, you just answered.
I would like to indicate that there's been a number of sitting up here at the DICE that use the county attorney's office on a regular basis. Email questions to them, have immediate response. I'm extremely happy with the service that they provide. There's some specialization within the four attorneys, which helps to give us better legal advice also. So my full line, I'm extremely happy. I deal with lawyers on a daily basis and I can say that this is an incredible bargain to get attorneys that are, that are beckoned call literally 24 hours a day, seven days a week for this small amount of money. So that's my, that's my indication. Any discussion?
I have one more discussion. Is there any way, I mean, nothing against sort of you or Mr. Hanson, but it would be nice to have a comparison maybe by the city manager saying, here's what we could do, you know, whether, you know, maybe the three month out is planned from here, just to explore other options and then, you know, from there they make a decision.
Mr. Jeff?
Mayor, I'd be willing to speak to that right now. I can guarantee you that you can't get the legal service that you're receiving right now for what you're paying. And if you go to the market, you're going to be paying about twice that, if not more. The level of sophistication that the city's facing in terms of the problems that we're trying to deal with, as well as the past issues that we're trying to correct, now is not the time to go look for a part-time retired cheap solution. You're, you're not ticking along and sailing on a well-tuned machine. And given the amount of service that you're getting from the county, you're paying for only a fraction of what you're receiving.
I don't think the suggestion was to look for a cheap part-time, it was to look for comparison. You look for comparisons to help, you look for comparison with life insurance. I don't see what the issue is, if you're looking for comparison. There's still a lot of time to where we're not going to short somebody's job. When you go into contract jobs, you realize that there's a potential that that contract's going to end. So the kind of guilt line there about, oh, my employee's going to lose her job, I'm sorry, but it would be nice to have a comparison to see from local available law, not just corporate law, but also private firms that are in this area. So we can look at it and see if it truly is a savings and not just what you said.
I would indicate that that has happened before years ago and that even at those years ago prices, it couldn't be done. At just $100 an hour, they, you know, that's 12 hours a week is all...
I guess if it can't be done, then, you know, we're not really losing much in three months, but this will say that it's can't be done. Be a, be a loss, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we still have a contract until June of 2018, so we do have time to look if, if that's the will of the council. But you're saying that we have attorneys that are beckoned call. I don't know that that holds true for everybody. And, I mean, the one thing I can say is that Ms. Arjuna is, she always does her homework and she always has answers for us, but we don't always take her advice. So, you know, I don't know, I, I don't know. I think we need more time maybe to discuss this a little bit more and just, you know, see what, because those are really the only two attorneys that we see here. It would be kind of nice to know, you know, what they all do, you know. This other young lady, we haven't really seen her in any meetings and we did see Lori occasionally when she was with the attorney's office. But, and I've been, you know, very pleased with Ms. Arjuna and her work, but there may be other options.
What, what are your recommendations, Ms. Black?
I didn't, I mean, it's up to the council, but it kind of sounds like everybody wants a little more time just to see if there are options and what those options are. Or, you know, maybe this is it. I mean, and, but we need to be sure that, that this is what we want.
I understand what you're talking about, you're wanting options, but if everybody is, is pleased with what has been happening with this legal that we're getting from the county, why are we looking for other options? Are you, are you not happy with, with what's going on? Is that what the problem is? Because you're not going to find anything better than this as far as the price is concerned. And the whole reason that we went to this is because the attorney that we did hire ran over, I think twice as much as what she was the contractor was for. And that was the reason that we looked at going to, to the county. I don't think that we need to be looking for, unless there's somebody, you know, unless she has a big problem with what we're giving them.
I guess my biggest problem is the Jacob's, she asked, so may I speak?
Excuse me.
My biggest problem is the, the Jacob's contract. I look in this contract right here and amazingly, there's a termination policy in this contract. Yet there wasn't a termination policy in Jacob's contract. And right there, that would have bothered you. Pushing it, okay? I don't see why we shouldn't review every year and see if there are better options. I mean, we all think this is not, you know, this is the best option, there aren't any better ones out there. Once we, the way we deal with the school district, you know, we didn't have the ability to call the lawyer whenever we wanted, we didn't go over. Is that why they went over with the past lawyer, because everybody was calling and asking for their own?
No, not for the, for the law.
Well, that's what I'm asking, why, why is that, they're not allowed? That's an easily capped situation. I just think that... I just think that why are we going year after year without looking to see if there's something better? And, you know, yeah, there are some things to do about it. Why else about that? Especially when I see this contract with a termination policy and it's just $3.5 million worth of debt, that I appreciate it. Do you want to say?
Anything else?
Just kind of nothing else.
So there's something we can table a revisit in three months?
No, we wouldn't table it in three months. What I'm saying, you have specific questions. Can we get a better deal is the bottom line of your questions. Is that not, what am I missing? What is, what is?
To explore all the, you know. I can't say I'm 100% happy. They've been very helpful in the past, but there's things, you know, that, I mean, our city is in trouble. You know, you have to look at all aspects of our city leaderships and that's just one aspect of it. So if we can look in three months and we decide to do it, let's do it. But again, this is a big thing and we're just going to jump into it. Let's just look at it. That's all I'm asking, let's just look at it a little bit.
My question, and I'm not arguing, but my question is what are we looking at? What will we have in three months that we don't have now?
We don't know. We can look and ask.
What are you going to look? That's my question. What, in the next three months, what data can we get you that will help you make a decision? What are you after? If it's not price?
When you just look at price, I mean, if we just look at price, we could go ahead and paper and say $10,000 for today's drink. I mean, if it's just price, it's not just the right price.
What is it?
It's something, all aspects of it. All aspects.
You can ask people out and ask, you're looking at them often.
Mr. Anderson.
I'm your boarder.
You know, there is such a thing as RFQ rules and we've been pretty lax here because we've all been polite to one another, but this is people just speaking without being recognized by the chair. We need to put a stop to that. You were saying?
Yes, I'm ready to ask.
You were saying?
Just asking. The simple fact is that someone must have something to offer, a better deal. I mean, put it out on the, you know, can someone offer something better?
Okay, the bottom line is, I guess I'm trying to get somebody to say, do you want an RFQ put out? If that's what you want to put out, then that's what we need to discuss. That's how you find out what are your qualifications and they bring you to the council. The council goes, you know what? I like these guys. Let's find out. You then choose them and you sit down and say, what's the deal you can give us? And if you don't like the deal, then you don't use them. But that's how it's done. That's what I'm trying to ask, what you want. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. And yes, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see some resumes. I would like to see what kind of experience people have in municipal law and what they would charge. Because I think of lawyers like I think of doctors. We don't just look at price. We look at quality, we look at their experience and we look what they could do for us. Price is not the highest priority when it comes to these kinds of services, in my mind.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the ADQ for legal services in the approaches county.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornet.
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Nay.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion fails. Four, three. Do we have a motion? Then the direction will be, Mr. Smith, that we put out an RFQ. And I would request that it get out as soon as possible to be able to provide the answers to the county attorney's office that they need. Item number five. Possible discussion, possible approval of the execution of the ADQ consent order for the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Smith, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Council, I would refer you to a memo from my office on 12-5 regarding the ADQ consent order. The brief summary is that we failed wet tests twice before ADQ issued the notice of violation in July. Once we began responding to the notice of violation, we saw failures in the tests and we could not locate documentation to show that ADQ had been notified of those failures or that staff had taken measures to correct the failures. ADQ, in looking at the details from the plant as we processed the notice of violation, informed us that we had one more attempt at the wet testing and if we failed that test, we would be issued a consent order. We took our time, we went through the plant, we consulted with Jim Doyle and other staff. We went through cleaning processes and then conducted the third wet test and failed. That failure occurred, when was that?
In November.
In November. We reported that immediately to ADQ that we failed and they advised us that they would issue a consent order. You have a copy of that consent order in the packet. The consent order is an agreement between the city and ADQ on performance and duties that the city must conduct in order to repair our testing record, clean up the plant and then demonstrate that we can pass the wet tests. Without the consent order, we would be facing fines and penalties at the moment. Given the NOVs issuance and the changes that we had in staffing at the plant, we do appreciate ADQ's issuance of the consent order and staff recommends that the council execute the consent order to allow staff to clean up the plant and get wet testing passing at the plant. Are there any questions?
Again, the obvious is, what if the council doesn't agree to this?
ADQ has legal measures that they can pursue through state and federal court to mandate us to act. They also have fines and penalties that they can impose daily on our, the failures that we've had in our inability to demonstrate compliance at the plant.
Discussion, council?
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Anderson.
Couple things. I guess the thing that stands out to me the most commonly is that the third is in the memo of the sample submission for the third test failed to reach the lab in Texas within the prescribed timeframe. Yes, sir. For lab testing. Mine is bad.
FedEx, two-ninety instead of overnighted. The wet tests, we send out, there's only like two labs in the United States, now a third in Pima County. We don't have a agreement with Pima County to do that. There's only like two labs that do the specific test because it's not a test. Wet testing isn't something that all states require and the algae specifically is the one that most states do. Arizona, being Arizona decides to do a little bit, you know, a little bit stricter, which is good from an environmental standpoint, not so good from an operational standpoint because algae is the one thing that fails quite easily. There's more, it's easier to find out what did cause the failure on algae than there is to actually figure out what it was. We overnight all that. Part of the package is, we take the tests, you do it for 24 hours, then you send it out overnight. Something happened. I don't know what happened between Bisbee office supply and Texas, but it didn't get there when it was supposed to.
Yeah. He has got a question for us, ma'am.
That just sounds ridiculous, something so important.
Well, it's beyond our control. We put it at the pickup and it picked it up on time. I don't know why the overnight didn't overnight.
Okay, and then when I read through all this, it says your name and Mario a lot, but what about Jim Doyle? Where is Jim Doyle in all this?
Jim Doyle is there every other day. In fact, recently even found out that we failed the tests before Mr. Doyle were because of the resources he brought down to help us out. We had three ladies come down from Pima County who are their compliance team. In fact, that they worked for DHS and they came down and helped us and when we were going through the reporting, that's when we found out the first failure. And then we found out, going through the emails, that there was a second failure that none of us knew about and he's been helping us out, in fact, with the resources because some, one of his colleagues up there helped him bend wet testing in Pima County. So we've been working with him as, but the thing is, is since they never did any of the previous follow-throughs, once you fail a wet test, you're supposed to do more testing to narrow down the toxin than it might be. They never did that, so we were kind of shooting in the dark, so.
Well, why isn't Jim Doyle overlooking all this? Because he's the one supposed to be here as an expert.
He is.
And he's still there.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you, Mr. Smith, is before Mr. Doyle, all those other failures were before any of us were involved at the plant. He has been there. When you fail a wet test, you're supposed to do other tests. They didn't do that, so we don't know. There are a thousand things that can cause algae to fail unless you actually did follow tests and that's what we're doing now. We have, I already have all the follow-up tests scheduled because of the discussion with Mr. Doyle. We didn't know about any of that because nobody, to be frank with you, before July, nobody did their job.
I'd offer this, ADQ provides three chances to run this test and pass it. And the reason why they do that is chasing down the cause of the failure is not simple. And it can be weather, it can be precipitation, it can be issues at the plant in terms of its operation, it can be cleanliness, it could be lots of things. The reason why they allow you to fail it three times is so that you get several opportunities to try and chase down where the failure came from. And our problem was that we were sitting on our third test, but we had not had two opportunities to try and figure out and narrow down the cause of the failure. There literally are decision trees to follow and the process of elimination to narrow down the source of the contagion or the competing algae. And none of that work can be done. So we're starting at the very beginning of a very lengthy analysis and we only have one shot. So we did our best to identify the things that typically cause those errors and fix those and we took the test and those weren't it.
Ms. Cornet.
ADQ is well aware of the issues that we've been having and they will work with us if we show that we're working really hard. So I could think that if it was a FedEx issue and it wasn't overnighted, there would be a paper trail to show that and that ADQ would allow us.
And that's, I guess there's a little miscommunication. That third test that was failed, well, the third test didn't count because of that. We did a, we're not counting that. We did a fourth, I get, we did a fourth test, that third test didn't make it, so it never counted because it, when they got it, it wasn't at the correct temperature, they didn't even bother testing it. So immediately we did another, we sent out another sample.
Counselwoman Klein, you're exactly correct. We reported to ADQ that for some reason FedEx didn't get it there in 24 hours and ADQ said, go ahead and retest. And so we were allowed to retest immediately, but we were not giving, given additional time to chase down more alternatives at the plant. We had to retest.
Okay, so we're being told that it was the third test, now we're being told it was the fourth test. Like I said, ADQ, I know they will, they will.
Yeah.
It didn't make sense to me, but so, yeah, I think the big question is where is Mr. Doyle? I thought he was going to be the NOV to this situation.
I want to, I'm trying to get something. The first two fails occurred under the supervision of the three terminated employees. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And then Mr. Doyle wasn't anywhere around. The third test is, it could be a number of, let's just say, six different reasons as to why it failed. They chose what they believed to be the reason, it turned out it wasn't. They don't get to go and do it again. They've had three failures, that's the requirements by AD. So Mr. Doyle was involved in one of those and the wrong choice was made simplistically. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir. And I would say again, ADQ is being reasonable by providing for the consent order.
We only failed one and that was the algae because you cough or look at it wrong and it fails. And so when Jim, Mr. Doyle came down, he did, he brought all these resources because I hadn't done testing at the plant. Mr. Flores hasn't done testing at the plant, other than the stuff that monitored the health of the plant itself. But when he came down, he brought all those people. And it wasn't until we were doing all the reporting a month late that we found out that all these things had failed.
I guess the thing I don't know.
And they are acting as our city magistrate and that is supporting them as our city magistrate. Rooting something like they indicated every election. Any questions?
One quick one. Just, I don't know a lot about this. Didn't you set a city magistrate where our money actually goes to the city, but right now it's not?
We are, yes, sir. The quick answer is probably 10 years ago, I'm going to say, that was given up when we decided the city manager and council went away from the city magistrate and contracted basically with the JP and gave away the funding. I will say that we are going to be entering into discussions with the current JP to see if there are some areas that we can recoup some of that, but the quick answer is, yes, sir, that was done years ago.
So this one affected, we decided to, and how, or change how we're putting money in, I think it was that.
That kind of goes with that. It's since we're starting with this new billing process, where we're going after people that don't pay the bills, is there possibly going to be a way to bring back a magistrate? Because that was the issue, that was one of the issues back 10 years ago, that they got rid of the magistrate because no money was being collected, so it couldn't pay for itself. But now with the collection service, could there be?
Yeah, absolutely, there could be, but we need to use the Band-Aid right now. Ms. Hanson.
I have a question on the agenda item itself under fiscal impact. It says a thousand dollars, yet this is an agreement for two years, so it doesn't, the fiscal gap could be $24,000, correct?
Yes. It's, that's what we have budgeted. Yes, ma'am. Well, obviously we have budgeted for two years. That's what we had budgeted per year, yes. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for the appointment of the city magistrate through the district court of the city of Bisbee.
I second that.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Berno, would you please give me a roll call, ma'am?
Councilmember Lindstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passed as you announced, ma'am. If you're moving on to item number seven, discussion on the preservation of the Warren Fire Station on Bisbee Road. Ms. Giacominio, this is your item. Do you want me to recognize the two speakers first before you talk or?
Sure.
Okay. The first speaker will be Ms. Blackwood.
The Bisbee Firehouse is in a very historic structure in Warren. Warren is only one of five American cities at the turn of the century that would be Warren is only one of five American cities at the turn of the century that would base on the city beautiful plan. Full of our local history and ability to be proud of, not wanting to just be discarded with milk and perish as it is in its current condition. But restored to its glory and be, in my opinion, a fire museum celebrating Warren, our fire history, our historic ballpark, the vista and the cemetery. In 2015 through 2016, my co-chair, Lucy Giacaminho, myself, became the Warren committee to work on that above idea, bringing all of Warren together as a Warren District and Fire Museum, using our three fire trucks. These three trucks are in a roof leaking public works building in Old Bisbee and need to be moved immediately and saved and not to be sold. In 2016, we did our research on other small museums, I've got a whole binder full of all this stuff. It took us a whole year to comply with. We went to the Hall of Fame in Phoenix, we talked to the ballpark cemetery, lighting up great services, the women's club liked our idea. We had, like I said, a whole research book on our fire museum, cemetery and ballpark, which will have display rooms in this museum. We went and worked every month with the Small Business Advisors, we have co-chief colleague in Sierra Vista, who helped us come up with a viable business plan. The visitor center, we did a survey on, would visitors like to go and see a fire museum in Warren? People said yes. On January 2017, we met with Mayor Smith, Councilman Dunn and CM Martin and asked them to be able to get a presentation to the council and work on getting city approval. Mayor Smith said no, he would not go to the council and he would only give us a year's leave. Well, we're not stupid and we would not do that for a year. Councilman Dunn let his packet of information sit up there at the city for three days and never picked it up until after the meeting, when he agreed with the mayor. We wanted to let you know tonight that we are still very interested in doing the Warren museum, but you first have to declare at a presentation site along preserving the three fire trucks as soon as possible. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Giacaminho?
Susan worked hours and hours and days and months of researching on firemen. She went to see them, she called them, and as she said, we went to find out how to run a business. We have plans, big plans. You know, my husband was captain of that station at one time and my child was there when they were little. The great fire chief that we had at one time grew up in that fire station. Jackie Ernst took his job seriously. We should honor him and all the great firemen in the city of Bisbee, because they are the best in the state. We had someone from Phoenix come down when I was on council and they declared them the best in the state and the paramedics. Well, we didn't get anywhere, like she said, but here's a lead. We wanted to take it to council and the mayor, Mr. Dunn, didn't want to do it, so it never reached council for a hearing for the public, which I think is ludicrous. This fire station, we made it. It would bring some tourism to Warren because we are a historic place. We have got older buildings down here than some other one in the business. And I think it's ludicrous that you won't even consider it.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Giacaminho?
It's kind of been on my mind all the time, before I was part of the council, like was stated, my dad was captain when I was a kid, Mr. Klein's father was involved also. The fire history of Bisbee is very rich, especially with this specific firehouse. One of the things that really prompted me to bring it to discussion and for future discussion is the fact that in the past two and a half, three weeks, I've been approached by three different people telling me that their fire station was for sale. And one of those persons was illegal, so it happens. And I find that just a little bit disturbing that we're selling off our historic sites, if that's the case. And I tend to agree with Mr. Miller that we do need to expand tourism and I think this is one of the prime opportunities that we can do. One of the things about this fire station, it's the first permanent firehouse in Warren. It was volunteer, the fire department was established by the Warren company in 1908. This firehouse was built in 1917, making it third or fourth oldest commercial building. The building was constructed circa, like I said, 1917, by the volunteer company. It's an important representative, Warren's continued to develop this building in the second decade of the 20th century and it relates to the needs for permanent firehouses in Warren. The architect itself, and that's one of the things Bisbee's famous for also, is the architect. And the architect of this is a good example of a bungalow design in non-residential buildings for non, in keeping with the general architectural theme of the townsite. If you go back and really look at the Warren history, it fits right into this early era where they were trying to make Bisbee New Yorkish with their park design and their house designs. The building retains sufficient integrity and design materials to convey its historic identity. Do you have a plan?
It's on the end of it.
Oh, oh, this thing. So the top one is the, in the beginning, the bottom with the lovely little shadow there. It's a more recent one, too, you're all familiar with the firehouse we're talking about. Here's another picture of it also. An ordinance, actually, the early ordinance in number 129 in 1908 created and maintained the fire department in the city of Bisbee and they extended it to the duties and officers and members. We have a lot of fire history in Bisbee and a lot of people don't realize that and I think this is a big draw tourist-wise. If we preserve this building, we can tie it into the ballpark, we can tie it into the Queen Mine Tour, and we can also tie it into the cemetery. There's a lot of different ways that you can make it work. Getting grants to take it back to its external glory, so to speak. Setting up gift stores, setting up different kiosks inside or different rooms for each one of those, the ballpark, the cemetery and the main area being the fire station. I think it will draw people into Bisbee and it will also help increase tourism. And it will also bring tourism down into the Warren area, especially when we do the house tours and home tours, I should say. Because Warren does have a lot to offer in another vein of tourism. So Captain Richard Davis was dispensed on 1910. So I mean, again, our fire history goes way back. We were actually part of State Firemen's Association and it, again, relates back to this firehouse. And these are just some of the pictures. That firehouse actually was part of a convention back in 1978 when I was in high school. This was Bisbee when they decided to build these firehouses and Warren Firehouse being one of them. Bisbee was once levelled by fires. And this is the type of history that we can show in this firehouse, making it a museum. We can bring the fire trucks back down and get them restored and put them in there. And we have volumes and volumes of information. Snooty Warwick has a lot of information that's right there. The firehouse in Phoenix is willing to work. And there are a lot of different entities that are willing to work together. I was talking to Carol Lloyd tonight, they do tours of the ballpark and she's very much interested in aligning the disciplines to go through. This is, again, the fires and this is the old high schools. And so you know that the history of Bisbee fire-wise is very rich. You can see our old Bisbee high school was burned and you know it now as being perfectly restored after a fire. So Bisbee can rise from its ashes in any situation. So I think we need to really push that by preserving the firehouse. And the first way to do that, I think, would be to designate preservation and put a long-term lease on it that's not going to allow it to be sold and allow people to look at getting grants to refurbish it and to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So to get it put back on the agenda for discussion and possible action over the next year?
We.
Since that's what I asked for in the first place.
That's right, but we need a specific action item. What I, what, and don't answer that now. But if you want this on, when we have an agenda item, we have discussion, we have to know what the action is requested and the backup material providing for that. I suggest that this is an important issue and perhaps we have a work session on it so we can talk about business lands and who needs to be involved and so forth. So with that, I'll be asking staff to schedule a work session in the near future. Item number eight. Discussion on possible approval of an updated Public Works Director City Engineer Job Classification. Ms. Blackford? Well, that's good, unless you want to give the city engineer's report briefly.
Okay, I do wish we had three hundred of all directions on now. Thank you. Okay, let's try not to say anymore, too. We had a very talented Public Works Director City Engineer in Mr. Tom Kleiner until December 15, 2015. He brought in over 12 to, 10 to 12 million dollars in grants for the city and was working on the grants to fix all the broken laterals in Old Bisbee and that was never finished. As a civil engineer, he ran all the grant money for the Bakerville and Tintown Sewer, the airport, the solar project and the sewer. Bisbee had an experienced Public Works Director with all his 40 years civil engineering was a great bonus for this, for this city. I want to talk a little bit, I don't want to go into Mr. Heradic's background of the city, but just what an inexperienced, unskilled Public Works Director is for this city. He let go all the 2.5 million dollars we had in grants for this, this airport. I can go into more detail if you want. But I heard that we just had a broken car dealer to get, to have gas and no care paper in sight. This is a city asset with a proven money for this town. City Manager Johnson let $300,000 state grant go for the airport paving and never told the council. I have all the records. I presented this to Mayor and Council and all the facts to the council. Nothing was done. Look at what Mr. Heradic did with running the sewer plant, inexperienced. Look at what Mr. Heradic did on the paving of the street. I've been going to more than that, but he created his own plant and not followed a voter-approved eight-year plan. I'm wondering if that was not illegal, not to follow what us voters approved done? And now look at our condition of our roof. Forest is a loss of $64,000 or more for the Sonoran Festival in May 2017. One in the world, Mr. Mayor, would he given a blank credit card to spend our tax dollars on? We need to hire a public works civil engineer with 20 to 30 years of experience with structural and problems like we have in this city in order to get this town running again. Why keep hiring someone with no experience? Has not Mr. Heradic's lack of experience and knowledge taught us anything? Do not change the job description, just follow it.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, what we have here is an updated job description for a Public Works Director in the city of Ginyar. I want to clarify that previously we've updated job descriptions and raised other ones. This one is not moving the other Public Works Director job description. This is so whichever direction the city goes, if we can have a job description that matches what is, what that individual will actually be doing. Previously, we have had professional engineers, PEs, working as a Public Works Director, but we didn't actually have a job description and a proper title for what they were doing.
Thank you.
So to update the job description, would it include some language and requirements for a professional engineer?
Questions? Ms. Bernard?
It would have been really helpful to have the other job description, like, I don't know, maybe have two, but generally, if we're updating, you know, we see the, you know, it's bolded, what is added or it's, you know, there's a line through to strike what is being taken out. And I think that would have been probably helpful here.
I have a question.
Ms. Giacaminho?
On the part, we talked about education experience and certifications. I'm just curious why, when you're talking about bachelor's degrees, it's not required? Because a lot of times that ends up being a loophole. Well, it's not required, but they're still going to hire this person. In our situation, again, in the past, we found that people who worked, didn't have that background of education, caused some major issues. A lot of times they'll say required, because that's important for them to have that engineering background. Along the same lines, is five, I know it's kind of hard finding these people, but five years really enough experience considering the uniqueness of our system and our town. I mean, that's, I'm just.
I understand that, I can change the language. I'm not married to this.
No, it's just a question, I'm just curious. Because a lot of times, I mean, to go to Sierra Vista, we'll say, it's just, you know, pretty much computer operated. I mean, it's state of the art. When you come to Bisbee, there's a lot of unique characteristics about Bisbee that sometimes a more seasoned individual, I'm just, I'm just curious. The other thing it says as a treatment is certification, or certification of waste water collection is preferred. Why isn't that not contingent upon being hired? You know, you have to get it, once you're hired, you must get that certification. I know in simple aquatic jobs, if I was to get an aquatics seat on a management job, it's always contingent on being hired. Once you're hired, you have to get that certification. And I think that's actually pretty important to have that certification considering our situations. And then again, the same on the back page, it says possession, or the ability to obtain. You know, that's just personal, I think it should be required. Once you're hired, you should have X amount of time. Sometimes you give you six months and they say within a year, or however long it takes. I know some of the wastewater, it takes a couple of years to handle, but someone in that position should probably have some background as well.
So can we put preferred in there? ADEQ, the Arizona Administrative Prostates, only the operators need to have the certifications. And then the code, it specifically says that the operators make the operational decisions. So that will be the individual at the plant actually operating and not the Public Works Director.
Okay, so what happens if your guys are all listed? I don't know, you start with that, you know, what happens if you get the blue flu and all your guys are up? And all you have is your Public Works Guide and it's now a certified. And that's just how, I mean, that's just how I'm just kind of looking at the, you know, due today situation. You know, it's always nice to be overqualified, but it is to be underqualified.
Well, I think with the new contract, we won't have that problem.
Do we have a question?
I move to approve the job classification, Public Works Directors, master of engineering.
Second. Those in favor, second, five, six, seven, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stay inside. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Duchon. Item number nine, city manager's report.
Mayor, I do have a couple of odds and ends. I'm sorry to see that some people have left. I really wanted to be able to speak to Jen Lurie's resignation. Her absence amongst our ranks is going to be sorely felt. I met with Jen last week to talk to her about transition and reporting to council. She'll be in front of council in the latter half of January to present council with what she's achieved, what she has set up and the direction things are going in. I've met with Mr. Duchon, the posting for her position goes out Thursday. We wanted to get the descriptions together and get them in the right channels. So you'll see that emerge on Thursday. There's been no discussion about eliminating that position in that department. I will announce that Express Bill Pay is now active on our website and if you so choose, you can sign up to. And if you so choose, you can sign up to pay your bills online without having to stop by. I also add that we've begun to add some value to our financial reporting. You'll see some financial interpretation from the finance director on your financial reporting to try and help convey where we stand with our numbers. Rents have been accruing here with the county. We ran through the insurance funded rents and November, December and part of January, if not all of January, will come out of our pocket. We've eclipsed the amount that was given in the insurance. We are working and we're spending volunteer time over at the facility to attempt to get it ready for the move. We've been in contact with APS and other sources for donated furniture and surplus equipment. We are working with the Airport Commission on a business plan and for that to be brought to council for your consideration. There's a lot of details there. We have also evaluated fuel, fuel distribution equipment and a credit card system that would rely on cellular communication, not internet communication. We've got cost information. We've got to do some analysis to see what kind of banking system that credit card reader will work with, particularly because we're going through the RFP for banking services at the moment. We're not sure what we're going to wind up with there. I'd also indicate that the county has a coalition grant application going into the EPA. The city belongs to that coalition and its EPA grant funds designed to renew asbestos and lead-based paint and those kinds of materials from buildings. We have been submitting information to county development services for that grant application. We have identified the Bisbee Fire Department as a potential place where those grant dollars might be used to clean up the building so that regular contractors might be able to get in there and do work. So those are kind of the pertinent things that we have on tap for this week. I've submitted a fairly detailed report to council on what we've achieved and where we're headed and that will be available on the website soon.
One clarification, when you said Bisbee Fire Department, were you in fact indicating the Bisbee Fire Station on Bisbee Road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. I move to adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor of adjournment, say in favor by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say in sign. Motion cleared.